All right. Tell me, just give me the go ahead?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for being available this evening. I think it's really important for our community that we're able to meet the candidates that are running as our, within our community and our neighbors. And want to welcome everyone to meet the candidates, and this is brought to you by ForHOP. So I'm very excited about the opportunity to host this and Dante being available here for us as well. One of the things that I'd like to just highlight, I know that Judy was able to provide you some, I would say, some ground rules regarding our meet the candidates this evening. I'm just going to go over a couple of them, and if you have any questions after or need some clarification, candidates, please let me know. So, real quick, each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks, and I'll be the timekeeper of that. After your opening remarks, each question, you will field the question, and each candidate will have a minute for each of those questions. And also in closing of those questions, you will, of the session tonight, each and every one of you will have two minutes to be able to close out your session at the end of this meeting. And we're projecting that we're going to conduct this meeting over an hour and a half. And as I mentioned before, Judy was able to provide details to each and every one of you. I don't know if there's any questions or clarifications you had that we could clear up for you right now. Then, all right. Dante, you wanted to say hello?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Welcome citizens of Fair Oaks. It's a privilege to be able to do this and moderate this again. So again, my name is Dante Watson. I will be asking the questions tonight, as Renee said, he will be keeping time. Again, as you all know, this type of event is all about respect, so we want to make sure that we're being respectful of our candidates, and we make sure that we're respectful of our attendees. And again, we can have disagreements and still be respectful in that process. So good luck to all the candidates tonight. I'm looking forward to hearing your responses and seeing how each of you can better serve our community. Again, one thing I do want to reiterate is in your team introduction, if you can also introduce yourself, as well as just give a little quip about your motivation for why you're running for city council as well. So that will start with our introductions, and we can start with that now. So I'm looking at the screen, and I'm just going to start in order. You know what? I'm a gentleman. We're going to go with the lady first. Ms. Emily, would you like to introduce yourself first?
Sure. Thank you. I would like to say thanks to all, all three of you and the others at ForHOP for holding this for our community. I think it's a great event, and I'm glad that we're doing this. I'm Emily Stroop. I'm running for place one on city council. This is a full-term position. I'm a mom, and I'm a lawyer. I'm an active volunteer. I've served on nonprofit boards, local and state boards as well. I'm originally from Dripping Springs, Texas, back when it was just a little speck on the map. And after high school, I went off to Seton Hall University in New Jersey, where I was on the softball team and the cheerleading squad. After college, I came to San Antonio to attend law school at Saint Mary's School of Law. I graduated in 2006, and I've been practicing law now for over 13 years, all 13 years in litigation. I'm married to my husband Scott, and we have, we're celebrating our 10-year anniversary next Friday, so I'm very excited. We have two children, Charlotte, who's eight, and Luke, AKA Sparky, who is four. And we have lived here in Fair Oaks Ranch for four years. Prior to that, we had owned some property off of Silver Spur Trail for a couple of years. And so we've kind of been ingrained in the community for about six years or so. We love Fair Oaks Ranch. We love the community here. We love the culture here. That's pretty much what brought us to this area. I, why am I running for council? Since I was my daughter's age, I've been involved in my community, and my parents have instilled that sense of public service in me. And so I've always had a heart for that and a deep pride for my home and where I'm from. And Fair Oaks Ranch is my home, and I feel a duty to serve my community. I think we're entering a particularly unique time, and I think my background and experiences would be a beneficial asset to the city council. So I'm here today to answer some questions and hopefully earn your vote. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Emily. And Chesley, we'll have you go next, please.
Alrighty. Good evening, everyone, and thank you Dante for moderating and Renee for helping, and also to ForHOP for putting this event on. I'm Chesley Minchow, and I'm running for Fair Oaks Ranch City Council Place Six. My husband and I moved to Fair Oaks Ranch in 2018. We moved out of the busy city in San Antonio because we wanted to live in the laid-back semi-rural lifestyle that so many of us have moved to this ranch for. I'm a native Texan. I'm a mom. I'm a wife. I'm a small business owner. I have a master's in business administration. I also have a dual major in accounting and finance. As a lot of you know, shortly after we moved in, I ran for the ForHOP board, and I was elected as the treasurer, as I currently serve today. I'm accountable as a steward of the association's common properties and member-driven funds, and I feel like I could do the same things on city council. One other key initiative that I've led is the development of a committee for transparency, governance, and legal fees, and I'm also a member of our ForHOP restrictions committee. I would say that I'm ready and willing to work with citizens and fellow council members and city staff to responsibly manage growth. I'm dedicated to independently analyzing issues and making decisions that are fiscally conservative, transparent, and require accountability. I will fight for the rights of property owners and ensure that community safety is a top priority. I couldn't imagine living in any other place, and I'm proud to raise my kids here, and I know that I can make a difference as we navigate challenging times. I'd also say the reason that I decided to run for the board, because I've been involved in ForHOP and been watching the city council, and I've noticed that there's a whole lot of issues, as Emily said, that our city is facing with growth. And I just wanted to be a part of making those decisions, and I also wanted to be an extremely awesome role model for my kids and teach them that they can do anything that fit their mind to. So, thank you so much, and vote for me.
Thank you. We'll move up next, and then I'll look at the screen. So Mr. May, if you'd like to go next, please. Two minutes.
Well, thank you. I appreciate y'all setting this up for us, this event, so that we get to talk a little bit more directly to our neighbors. My name's Steve May. I'm running for council place six. My wife Leslie and I moved to Fair Oaks Ranch in 2010. And we live here with my mother-in-law and our daughter Jess. Since 2011, I've been on the ForHOP restriction committee for my area, working with my neighbors, helping them to ensure that fencing, compliance, any help that they need with regard to restrictions, we can help them with. I'm a 21-year military veteran. I'm mindful not to waste taxpayer dollars. That's going to be one of the reasons I'm running is to, to care for the citizens, make sure that citizens understand that somebody is going to be looking out for them. We all saw the issue with the stormwater utility and how a lot of people got a little bit upset with that. I'll make sure that that doesn't happen again. Part of the military taught me a lot about leadership and problem-solving skills, and those are one of the things that I'll be able to bring to the board, to the city council. Watching out and looking to see what are the problems out there in the city. One would be the wastewater treatment plant that should have been addressed many, many years ago and still hasn't been. Be able to take advantage and care for that. Growth, city growth, part of that is, a lot of us have heard about the, the elevated storage tank. I would be against that. Right now, we need to fix the critical city infrastructure before we think about growing even more. Member of Cornerstone Church, a member also of the Fair Oaks Ranch golf course, avid skier with my wife and my daughter. And if you'd like to vote for me, it's voteforme.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. We appreciate that. Next up, we're going to have Mr. Parker.
Hi, everybody. I'm Scott Parker, and I'm running for place five on the city council. Thanks ForHOP for putting this thing on. You guys are awesome. I've lived here with my wife Teresa for past 18 years, and we just have really come to love the place that we're, we're living in. We've raised kids here. The kids have gone to local schools. Our grandkids practice their golf swings in the, in the front pasture. I live out on the, on the backside of town. We have rescue horses that we've worked with in our, in our back pasture. And these guys can be seen, if you drive down Meadow Creek Trail, you can see our horses and donkeys out there, just, just loving the good life, which is what we find out here, and it's so, so really special about where we live. We just love it here. It's a special charm and atmosphere that just sets it apart from so many other places. I have a very strong background that's deeply rooted in service. My family is a proud three-generation Air Force family. I retired from the Air Force and the Texas Air National Guard in 2005. I was mobilized twice after 9/11 and served around the, around the globe, but I've always come back to Texas. I know what it means to take care of neighbors. I know how to do the hard stuff during disasters, and I'm ready to really how to take care of those who are looking to you for answers and for guidance. I've led troops, but also built teams. I know their strength in listening and in understanding. I've also known service as a federal agent. We spent most of my law enforcement career working tough financial investigations involving millions of taxpayer dollars, that some of which, I would hope to say most of which, got eventually returned back to the government coffers. I want to be part of the city team that makes sure that the, that the charm is not diminished by overdevelopment. I want to work to, to move the city ahead and by problem solving, utilizing conservative spending issues and, and out-of-the-box thought processes with full transparency.
Mr. Parker, you have 10 seconds left.
I'd like to invite everybody to visit my website at votescottparker.com to learn more about me and my views on specific issues, and contact me directly if, with any concerns that y'all may have. Thanks for this opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to serving as on the city council. Vote for Scott. Thank you.
Thank you for your introduction. I see you got a lot of vote for me tonight. Keep it going. Mr. Taylor, you're up next. You're on mute, Mr. Taylor.
There we are. There we are. Hi, good evening. I'm J.C. Taylor. I'm running for city council place five. I would like to thank the Fair Oaks Ranch Homeowners Association, along with Dante, Renee, and Judy for putting on this event tonight. I'd also like to thank my fellow council candidates for attending tonight's event. I am a third-generation Fair Oaks Ranch resident. My grandparents built their house off of Preakness in 1977, and my parents subsequently raised me, along with my three younger brothers in Fair Oaks Ranch, in our house off of Pertrand Circle. I attended Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary School in 1995 as a kindergartner in the school's inaugural year, and I was part of the class who voted on naming the school's mascot after the Mustang. I graduated from Bernie High School in 2008 and went on to university at UTSA. During my time as a student, I worked for my family's company where I'm now the VP of Marketing. I met my wife while attending UTSA, and I've now been married for 11 years and have four amazing children. With the future in mind, and for my children and yours, I'm running to protect Fair Oaks Ranch. I will proudly say that I'm happy with how the city has been ran over the last six years and want to continue honoring our city charter. I want to, this is a little bit about why I'm running. So I want to maintain our semi-rural and unique charm of Fair Oaks Ranch. I'm a pretty simple guy, and my reasons for running are simple, too. I grew up here, and the experiences I had growing up in a small semi-rural community are things I value. Those experiences shaped who became as an adult. Chantel and I are raising a fourth generation of Fair Oaks Ranch teenagers out on Post Oak Trail, and we want to continue to keep this community to be, for them, what it was for me. That's exactly why I decided that it's time to step up and, and use my time to serve my community.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Appreciate your introduction as well. Do you want to do a vote for me website that you have or anything like that?
Sure. Yeah, you can go to votecataylor.com.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And last but not least, Mr. David.
I'm mute here. Am I unmuted?
You are now, sir.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Dave Delarico. Many of you may be from the official history of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch entitled Vision to Reality, written by our former city councilman Gary Younglove. In it, I was identified as a person primarily responsible for stopping the annexation of Fair Oaks Ranch by the city of San Antonio in the 1980s. I was also one of the original committee attendants that was formed to incorporate the cities of Fair Oaks Ranch North and South. I later helped to consolidate those two cities into what we have now as the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. In the 1990s, I was appointed as the city's very first director of building codes. I wrote the original building codes and helped to establish the current building code department. Most recently, the mayor and city council appointed me to the Home Rule Commission, where I helped to write the city charter and formulate our council manager form of government. Now, my wife and I have owned a home and paid taxes to the city of Fair Oaks Ranch since it was first incorporated in 1988. Since then, we've watched the city grow to over 10,000 residents and expand to nearly 9,000 acres. The homes have gotten larger, but the size of the land use plots have gotten smaller. Now there are those who want to build even larger, higher-density developments here on the north side of the ranch. I seek to restore the integrity of our founding fathers' original vision for the city by staying true to our comprehensive plan, enforcing our unified development code, and preserving the semi-rural rustic character and quality of life that originally attracted us to the city. Although I welcome the changing demographics of our city, I also think it's important to protect our existing neighborhoods and property values. I hope you'll agree after tonight's forum that I'm not only the best and most uniquely qualified candidate to serve you, but in return, I promise to provide you with a municipal leadership that is not only responsive to your needs, but also treats all of its citizens with the dignity and respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delarico. And so now we'll get into the components of the night of asking questions. Again, be mindful of your time. Each of you will have one minute to answer questions. If I see that you're in depth of wrapping up, I will give you that grace period of 10 seconds. If you go past that 10 seconds, we will ask you to stop and allow another candidate to answer. Now, for everybody that's out there to attend us tonight, we did get quite a few questions. Obviously, for time's sake, we can only ask seven, so if your question did not get asked, please know that we are going to provide these questions to the candidates, and then you can reach out to them directly, or they can reach out to you as well. It will probably be limited tonight that we can't ask too many questions that come in from the chat because of the time constraints that we have. Please use the chat to ask those questions, and we'll make sure they get to the candidates. And if there's a specific candidate for that question, let us know that as well so that we can provide that to the candidate. First question for the evening, and a lot of you all mentioned talking about, again, maintaining Fair Oaks as Fair Oaks as it's been. So the first question tonight is, and we'll start with you, Mr. May. What is your stance on the existing and future plans for development of Fair Oaks Ranch? One minute.
Well, first of all, for the future development, I believe that we need to really limit the high-density developments. We have already infrastructure within the city, as I mentioned earlier, that requires upgrading. Also, if you thought about high-density growth in reserve area before we expand Ralphair Road as a state of Texas, just imagine if you travel Ralphair Road every day, just how busy that that would get and how miserable a drive it would be. Not to mention that it would totally change the outlook and the complexity of, of the city.
Thank you for that, Mr. May. Mrs. Emily, we'll have you answer that question next.
So I don't think many people want a whole lot more development, and I'm, I am not different from that. I definitely, if I could stop the development, I certainly would, but that's not realistic. And so I think what the current council has done to help us plan for the future is they put in place some tools, like the Unified Development Code and the Future Land Use Maps, which I've seen when I've gone to meet with city staff. They've shown me those maps, and I, so I think we do have tools that have been put into place that need to be utilized, but part of that is going to be prioritizing the needs and also implementing those future visions that have already been put in place, which will help limit the, the density of the growth that we're seeing.
Thank you. Good evening, Emily. Mr. Taylor, you can answer this question next.
Thank you. So, as talking with the residents, you know, this is by far, I think, the number one concern, right? How are we going to manage growth going into the future? So before the city adopted the Home Rule Charter in, in 2017, we were a general law city, and we didn't have the necessary rules in place at the time. So now, going into the future, we do. We have the Unified Development Code, and we have a Planning and Zoning Commission. And after meeting with Tobe Mabels, he's also been able to show me the future land map, future used land map, and what that consists of and what that can look like going into the future. If at any time a developer wanted to request a change in development, though, however, it's important that all residents are informed and voice, voice their opinion, whether in favor or opposed of any changes that someone may want to do. I believe Fair Oaks Ranch has something, some, some land that's still undeveloped. My interest is in making sure that we keep it in, as in line with what our founding fathers had in mind, a semi-rural environment with open spaces.
Thank you for that, Mr. Taylor. Mrs. Delarico, you can answer the question next, please.
Yeah, with regards to the plans for development, my stand, well, my stand is resolute. Although I'm not anti-growth, I strongly believe in controlled growth. That doesn't violate our comprehensive plan or betray our founding fathers' vision for a semi-rural rustic, high-quality hill country type of community. Let's take, for example, the reserve that's recently been sold out to another developer called the Bernie Ranch Estates. Instead of 645 homes, they want to build up on the north side of the ranch on 345 acres. They now want to build 1,100 homes on those same acres. Our developmental agreement only allows for 86 homes, and our comprehensive plan will limit it to 69 homes. Fortunately, the Cow Creek Groundwater Conservation District has Rule 10.3. That allows for one single-family home for every four acres, and it's been challenged successively, successfully and enforced, as evidenced by Tapatio Springs when they were subject to a $10,000 daily fine. As one of the original founders of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, I take this issue very seriously, and I'll fight with every fiber of my being to stay true to our original vision for our founding fathers. And in regards to--
Delarico, 10 seconds.
In regards to existing developments, we need to stand by our Unified Development Code, which is the enforcement arm of our comprehensive plan, as well as the CDRs of our HOAs that were originally written to protect our neighborhood's quality of life and property values.
Thank you, Mr. Delarico. We appreciate that. Ms. Chesley, you're up next.
Thank you. So as I said before, I am also for lots of green space, and as some of you know, the, I live on the north side as well, so a lot of this growth is coming up here by me. So with all of that being said, I believe that we have to follow our UDC and zoning rules that we have, and that the new development agreements and the ones that we work on will have to pass through the Planning and Zoning Commission. There, those that have the development agreements in place, we also have to follow those, so I believe in that as well. Also, in Texas, property owners have the right to develop or sell to a developer, so I don't believe we can stop it either. I personally support being as stringent as we can in our rules. Again, having the green space, not making exceptions. But I do believe that we have to have a balance necessary to keep us out of litigation and respect the rights of property owners, so I'm for effectively managing growth.
Thank you for that, Ms. Chesley. Mr. Parker?
It sounds like we're all in agreement. We, it absolutely appears, I live also on the north side on Meadow Creek Trail, as I've mentioned before. Growth is bound to happen, but we really have to manage it. There's, there's just no two ways about it. We're not going to be able to stop growth, but it's important that we stay within the, the bounds and the rules of the UDC and everything else that we've put in place to, to keep the developers, not at bay, I don't mind working with developers, but I think it's really important that we, we have them playing to the benefit of the city as well. I, I would directly be, and everybody along, both where J.C. and myself live, are directly affected by what happens in the reserve behind us. This is an area that it's not set up for, for massive growth, and it's an area where it looks like we have, we've planned possibly to put, put the water tower out there, which I am not for as well. But growth is bound to happen. We have to go ahead and, and limit it in order to keep the flavor of the city, the charm of the city, a reason why we've all come to live out--
10 seconds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Mr. Parker. We'll move on to our second question of the evening. And Ms. Chesley, we'll start with you. Have you identified areas in the Fair Oaks budget where you think we can save money without sacrificing services or amenities?
So I would say in talking with a lot of neighbors, the questions that I'm asked the most in regards to the budget are, why do we have so much leftover? Why, also, I get asked about salaries and the number of people that we have in, on our staff and the increasing number of people that we have on staff. So those are two things that I think that we can look at. I'm not suggesting we completely delete things, but it seems to me if we have a large surplus, and I know that was paused and we put on hold certain projects, so if we could manage our city successfully and have such a surplus, maybe there are some things that we can look at to have a cost savings. So that's kind of where I stand on that.
Thank you, Ms. Chesley. Mr. Taylor?
I think, you know, there are some issues, you know, with the surplus, we have some issues. We don't have issues with the surplus. I think the residents have questions with the surplus. However, because of COVID, we didn't do some projects that we had on the schedule of, of projects because we didn't know what was going to happen during COVID, and we wanted to keep our reserves there. After talking with Sarah Buckle, our finance director, I think that we are preparing, we're looking out into the future two to five years and keeping the funds that we need to maintain the city into the future. I think it's really important that we look into the future for, you know, what is going to come up unexpectedly or perhaps planned for, and continue to manage our budget accordingly.
Thank you for that, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Delarico, you can answer the question next, please.
Thank you. Sutton's Law states that when diagnosing a problem, one should always consider the obvious. Willie Sutton, for those of you who don't know, was a famous bank robber in the 1930s, and when he was asked by a reporter, "Why does he rob banks?", he says, "Well, that's where the money is." Well, the same holds true for our city budget. More than three-quarters of our tax money goes to personnel, either directly or indirectly. That's where the, and that's where we need to take a very hard look at just how effectively and efficiently we're spending our citizens' hard-earned tax money, especially in light of the very generous pay and allowances that our city employees currently enjoy and exceed the incomes of many of our residents and were approved by some city council members who pay no city taxes for one reason or another and are not personally impacted by these types of decisions. Another area of deep concern is the recent expenditure of $482,000 to design a water tower that's not required, it's not needed, and it's not wanted. The fact is, the water tower was never required by TCEQ, by the city council, and it was never, and it never debated its merits. It's also--
10 seconds.
The water tower is not needed for fire protection or water supply or, and we have alternatives like hydro pneumatic tanks that would more than fulfill the need as recently approved on the south side of the ranch, at one-tenth the cost. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mrs. Emily, you're up next.
So as I understand it from my meeting with some of the city staff, our city has always been run, and not always, but as far as the last several years, the city has been run on a pretty strict budget. We're kind of a bread and butter budget. We're not, we don't normally run on a big surplus, like, like J.C. and, and others have said in the past. So normally, we are a paycheck-to-paycheck kind of a city, and I think that having the strategic action plan in place that has been put in place by the current council identifies certain needs of the city, and that's where our money is going to. I pay taxes in Fair Oaks Ranch. I, you know, I obviously have an interest in where our money goes. I do think that we need to be respectful and mindful and understand what the needs are for our residents and use their money wisely.
Thank you, Emily. Mr. Parker?
Sorry for that. I'm having a little technical issue. I, I agree, and I, and I think that, that our budget, our budget system needs to be run from a zero-based budget perspective. We need to pay for what we want and, and be able to work with that. City salary structures in the-- City salary structures in the city is something that needs to be addressed all the time. We don't just look at it once and then, and because we want to be able to retain and keep and attract employees that are going to be those types of people that we want to have on our staff and are going to do the best job for the city. We are in a budget surplus area. This is the time that we can go ahead and address what we're going to do with that money. We need to funnel, use it to fund these critical infrastructure issues, such as what happens on, every time it rains on Rolling Acres Trail, and we can't get police or fire in there because of flood issues. It needs to be a pay-as-you-go system. So COVID may have been a part of it, but we are in a situation now with the budget surplus where we can go ahead and actually use this to our advantage and our opportunity. But pay-as-you-go and work from the true perspective of, let's go ahead and budget for what we need.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Time's up. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. May?
Been flat this year. That's only after six years of straight growth, and the home valuations have gone up. It's a good time to address property freezes on elderly and disabled members.
Mr. May? And sorry about that, Mr. Parker. Your time is up. Mr. May, question to you, sir.
Okay, great. Well, kind of like Mr. Delaranco mentioned earlier, one is salaries, and that's a big part of our driving in the budget. For example, the city manager and his two assistants who work, they're getting paid roughly $540,000 a year. The city manager's salary is the same as the city manager in U.S., Texas, which is right there by DFW Airport with a population of 55,000 people, with many large businesses, supporting libraries, fire departments. And they, according to their website, have 49 employees to our roughly, from what I hear, 70. I haven't got a real good number on that yet, but that'd be one. Also, looking for, not always looking for consultants to come in and take our money for-
Thank you. I had some technical difficulties there. We're back. For our next question, and a lot of you all have mentioned development, so please feel free to sit there and talk about a different issue if you like. It says, "What are the three biggest issues facing our city at this time, and what will you do to address them?" For the sake of time, you only get a minute. I would say pick one issue that you see fit best, and we'll start with you, Mr. Delaranco.
Yeah, I need a whole lot more than one minute here, but- High-density developments are increasingly threatening our life and betraying our founding fathers' vision. We also have a problem with transparency. For most of the city's history, the city council meeting minutes were very detailed. Now we seem to have moved to something they call action minutes, which say nothing about the discussions that address the various issues. Back in 2015, it's highly doubtful we could have been successful in stopping the reserve development without access to those detailed meeting minutes. Another testament to our increasing lack of transparency is the formal PIA request I sent to the city, asking for a police report on the fatal golf cart accident that occurred six months ago, about 100 yards from my front door. Result was, I was given 18 pages of completely blacked-out, worthless pages of nonsense. I'll put a stop to this, and I'm going to restore the true meaning of the word transparency back to the city council and the city staff. And finally, the third biggest issue is a lack of fiscal restraint. When I worked for 40 years with, we had to learn how to do more with less. If our city staff can't adapt to that tried and true national policy, then we need to get someone else who can. Thank you.
Thank you, Delaranco. Appreciate that. Mr. Parker?
The issue that comes to mind for me is the elevated storage tank issue. This is, this was an issue that I think that the voters and the city never really had a chance to get the real story on. The 2017 TCEQ report listed nine violations that required corrective action, and none of those ever had anything to do with the water tower. I'm not going to be able to cover it all in a minute. We hired, paid consultants to go ahead and present to the city council, again, that perhaps the information was not fully clear and presented correctly. We're building a, we're playing on, building a water tower on land that we don't own and we may never own. This is just a plain fact. That sure gives people and the people who own the reserve, now or later, some real leverage about when it comes time to how many homes they're going to build. These are just things that we need to consider. Fire protection in the ranch is excellent. We haven't had an issue in 30 years, talking-
Ten seconds.
So talking with experts, we don't, we don't, it's not something that we need for fire protection. We talked about the use of hydro pneumatic tanks that would be a viable and much less expensive option. It's my belief-
Mr. Parker, sorry to cut you off. Thank you. Time's up. I know this, I know that's a lot to answer in a minute, and definitely, please reach out to your constituents as well as if you have further details of these answers. Mrs. Strump, you're up next, please. Yes. Sorry, Ms. Emily.
Sorry. So the three, three of the biggest issues that I think are consistent issues that I've been hearing about, number one, is safety in Fair Oaks Ranch. That's one reason, one big reason why a lot of people come here, because we have such a safe community. So I will do everything in my power to continue to maintain that level of safety and the level of expectation for safety that we have. Another big issue that I hear about is wastewater, the wastewater treatment facility. It's an old facility. It's 40 years old. It definitely needs some improvement. I know that there's an issue of, do we improve what we've got, or do we build a whole new facility? That's something that we would, we would need to explore. I would err on the side of, what can we do with what we've got right now, if that's possible? And so the last big issue that I've been hearing about is just maintaining that sense of community, which kind of coincides with the development and the growth of Fair Oaks Ranch. And so I think it's important that we do what we can to maintain that culture, that charm that everybody's been referring to, and in maintaining that growth responsibly.
Thank you, Ms. Emily. Mr. Taylor?
Great. Thanks, Dante. So you mentioned the managed growth. We've already went over that, so I'll skip that one. Infrastructure, specifically our water, our wastewater and our roads, and public safety. And so I got to go on a tour of the wastewater plant and the water plants. Very neat, fascinating stuff, fantastic. The wastewater plant is nearing 40 years old, and so there's a problem with smell. All the folks that live around there, they've complained about the stench of it and everything else. So we're looking at an issue. I think it's a volute de-watering press that we're looking at installing to help with that problem, but then we need to continue looking out in the future because we also have, I think, 50% of the wastewater plant being used. Also, you know, we're in one of the top 10 safest cities in the state of Texas. I met with Mr. Tim Mauring, a police chief, and I think they do a fantastic job. I want them to continue to do a fantastic job. I want to continue to be one of the top 10 cities in the state of Texas.
Thank you for that, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Monchow?
And I feel like going last, just repeating pretty much what everybody else said. So in talking to the people that I've talked to, I've heard a lot about growth and development. Again, we've gone over that. The second thing that I heard a lot about also was aging infrastructure, which, as many have said, is what we consider the water, the wastewater and the roads. Something that stood out to me on our tour that we all, I think all of us were on it, was something that one of the maintenance workers mentioned about the size of the lines for fire protection. So I specifically asked about the North 40 here and what our lines are like, and they told me they believe they're 10 to 12 inches, and that was sufficient. But when I asked what they were on the south side, they had, they said something, and I believe he said three to four inches, which I learned actually from the Bernie mayor that that's insufficient for fire protection there. So I do think that that infrastructure is an issue that needs to be addressed. How we address that, that'll be a council decision, obviously. Something else I'm hearing a lot about is, what others have mentioned, is the trust and the transparency side of it. We definitely-
Ten seconds.
-address issues in our community. And as Emily said, you know, I would like to get back to that Fair Oaks Ranch that we all know and love. And so I hope that after this election, we can all unite and figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Chesley. And Chesley, because you felt like you were going to repeat what people already said this time, I'll let you start with this question first. And so-
Let Mr. May go.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. May. You didn't get a chance to respond. I thought you went first. Sorry about that, Mr. May, please.
No worries at all. So some of the things that, some of the issues that I see with the city, first of all, is communication. You should not have to do, if you put in a public information access request, I don't care how controversial that issue is, that information should be released. It should not have to go to the state attorney general to get a ruling, which is what people are seeing. And Mr. Delaranco had the same issue with the police department. Well, another issue is wastewater treatment plant. I've been here since 2010. That treatment plant has had a smell issue since 2010 and, say, before that. Yeah, now they're looking at the volute de-waterization press, and that's one of the things that if they would have done a long time ago, they might not have gotten nuisance odor issue back in 2015. If you're around that area, you play golf, you walk on the parkway, you cannot help but gag at that, and that is a serious leadership issue failure within the city. That I won't let happen. We need to talk to the residents, find out what their problems are, and fix them, and don't delay. So those are, those are just two of the issues that I would see.
Thank you, Mr. May. I appreciate that. And now, Chesley, starting with you for this next question. Our city was recently impacted by a severe winter storm. How would you be proactive in assisting homeowners with issues stemming from weather-related problems like this, such as devastated landscaping?
So I have no help in the landscaping issue because all of mine also died in the winter storm. I would say that we will learn from our mistakes. On that, on the wastewater treatment tour, actually, I spoke with the maintenance guys, and they told us what they had learned from past times that we had had iced over. And they said that Tech Stop pretty much just ignores Ralph Fair Road. They knew this was going to happen, and so they went ahead and I put the salt and the things down for us. So I think learning from past experiences and mistakes. Obviously, we can't prevent things from happening that are 100-year events. Also, I know that we have the Code Red that we put out, and our community came together. We supported the maintenance workers. So I really feel like the things that we did worked well, but we should have been a little bit more proactive when so many people lost water, not just the ones in SARS. You know, a lot of people in the back 40, we didn't receive this Code Red and-
I've said it, Ms. Chesley.
...inflation going forward for the water, but, you know, we were without water for four to five days as well. So I'd say learn from mistakes.
Thank you for that. Mr. Parker?
I need you to go ahead and repeat the question for me because I want to make sure that I understand. Are we talking about actual landscaping issues, or are we talking about issues that stemmed from, that affected the city with roads?
For the sake of time, and I understand that, again, a minute's a short amount of time for y'all, let's just focus on related issues due to severe weather. How will you assist homeowners?
Yes, sir. Well, I commend the city for their new and improved way of getting information out to everybody. I agree with Chesley that it's a 100-year event, and when we know that it's coming, we can, we can do more as a city to get information and suggested remedies out to the community. Other than that, people do, the problems, what is stemming from frozen water lines and icy conditions, these are things that, as a city, that we need to go ahead and stay on top of, that we can make sure that, as much as within our control, that we can go ahead and work towards. My understanding is that a lot of the problems on the I-10 portion of the city really became SARS, were SARS problems and not the city of Fair Oaks water system, that we didn't suffer outages there. And of course, a lot of us on the back 40, we all had frozen pipes due to the, being on well, and had wellhead issues.
Thank you for that, Mr. Parker. Time's up. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Ms. Delaranco?
As I understand the question, how do I plan to be proactive in assisting the homeowners on weather-related issues? Well, first, I take a very hard look at why the city has not investigated the possibility of water interconnectivity between SARS and the Fair Oaks Ranch Water Utility. If one fails, the other should be available for backup. I would also place the city staff Public Works Department on standby to assist the city residents with preventing frozen pipes and would open the lines of communication with the public via periodic updates, emails, websites, red alert notices, et cetera, to all the residents. Although the mayor is officially in charge of emergency services, I would engage the actions of all of our city council members to notify and take personal action to help our residents in times of need as they may be necessary. And finally, I'd hold an after-action review to discuss and execute any lessons learned from that experience to help mitigate any homeowner losses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David. Ms. Emily?
I think the city should be commended for what they did to assist our residents that were on the Fair Oaks Ranch utilities to prevent them from losing their water. The stories that I've heard from talking with some of the city workers, it was literally nothing short of heroic in what they did to keep water available for those who are on it. And unfortunately, those that were on SARS did not have that same response because our city workers literally moved into city halls, so that way they could be close by and be able to address the areas that were needed to be addressed during that winter storm. And so the city should be commended for that, and I think that is a learning experience. I will kind of echo what Chesley said. I think that we can learn a lot from what happened, so we can be better prepared. I'd also commend the county commissioner and our own council member, Laura Kerner, for kind of coordinating the potable water effort that was set up as well. And I think that those are going to be valuable learning tools going forward in preparing ourselves if unfortunately this sort of ever happened again.
Thank you, Ms. Emily. Mr. May?
So concerning the recent storm, first of all, yes, the city needs to be proactive as those storms roll in. Thankfully, the public works employees gathered around and, yes, stayed in the, within the city hall, responding to all kinds of emergencies. But they also need some of the equipment. These guys, these people were driving around on icy roads with vehicles that are not set up for driving on ice. Four-wheel vehicles might have been helpful as they were moving generators around. We also need to ensure that we have enough propane for all the tanks that run our water systems around the city, as that's the backup for any power failures that come around. We also need to work with our, with SARS and GBRa so that we ensure that all our residents, whether they're on SARS or we're getting water feeds over there in Deer Meadows from GBRa, that we're going to have redundancy or some capability to get those, to ensure that those pipes don't freeze up and cause-
Thank you, Mr. May. Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
First, I would just like to thank the Public Works Department. They did a fantastic job, I think, serving the city during that time. I mean, they were basically living in city hall, and, you know, they kept all of our systems running. So down in the south, though, as I understand it, there was a problem with SARS. I think the city and SARS, we do need to work together on finding a solution to make sure that that doesn't happen again. As I understand it, what happened was that SARS wasn't suited to go out and, you know, refill the fuel that was the backup supply for the power to pump the water back up because, you know, it's uphill and has to be pumped up. And so they weren't allowed to go out and get that fixed because it was a dangerous risk. However, our Public Works Department did go out there and address some issues that we were having. I know on the north side of town, one of the lift stations for the wastewater was almost overfilling, like minutes away from toilets throwing back into the houses, and they went out there, reconnected it, hardwired it. My hats off to them. They did a fantastic job, but we do need to work with SARS to remedy any issues going forward. Thanks.
For this next question, Ms. Delaranco, we'll start- For this next question, Mr. Delaranco, we'll start with you. Capital projects are a necessity of city governance. Describe your process for identifying whether a need exists to undertake a major capital project.
Well, first of all, I wouldn't take the word of the city staff after they incorrectly advised the city council that the Northside Water Tower was a T C E Q requirement. And we later found out that was false. Aside from that, I would look at the real need for the project versus any desire for saying. And then look at the economic cost-benefit analysis. And if that project best served the interest of our citizens, its impact on the community, and even if we can hope to afford such a project without raising taxes. Any true need for a capital improvement project makes itself known over time. The key is in setting priorities and balancing the overall costs with the values of the community when safety overrules cost, but still requires fiscal restraint and a pay-as-you-go type of policy. Finally, I'd seek the advice of our citizens and get their input before agreeing to any project that doesn't affect the health, safety, and overall welfare of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaranco. Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, um, you know, any capital improvement projects that need to be completed going into the future, I think we should most certainly get the residents' input if it's not something that's an essential service. Um, you know, I know I've heard a lot about the, the roads, uh, lately, uh, specifically Ammon, the back part of Ammon, as well as the road that I live on, Post Oak Trail. And I think there's another crucial, two, two crucial roads that we talked about on the last council meeting that may need to be addressed. But, um, and again, you know, it's important that we budget for those capital improvement projects going into the future. And, uh, you know, make sure that everything is taken care of enough to Fair Oaks Ranch standards. Um, thank you for the question.
Thank you. Mrs. Emily, we'll go with you next.
I think one important thing that we need to do is obviously listen to our residents and, and find out from them what is important to them before we undertake a big project. And, uh, we also, I believe we do need to listen to the city workers and the city staff to find out what is working for them. They are the boots on the ground. They know what is working for them and what isn't working for them. Um, and while we all may come from different backgrounds, I think it's important to listen to the experts who are experts in certain areas, um, and dealing with certain projects and listen to them. And then, like the others have said, I think it's important to prioritize and make sure that these, um, capital projects are projects that are going to be able to fit within our budget. Um, and if they don't for some reason, again, we need to talk to the residents and find out if that's something that we need to go to them to seek out a bond or something else to fund that project.
Thank you. Mr. May.
Well, as with anything, um, if you have a large project, uh, you need to identify the need. Is it, uh, a safety issue? Is it a nuisance? Um, and then identify what the, uh, what the best, uh, solutions might be. Uh, a lot of times, um, from what the, um, the consultants, um, tend to do, apparently, from what I'm reading is we, we go down the road of like the stormwater utility fee and, and we're going to fix all that project when the city residents don't want it. Uh, they don't want the extra funding. Uh, they don't see the need. It's not communicated very well. Uh, so all the, uh, all the capital projects need to be racked and stacked, need to be communicated with the city, uh, residents, uh, so that they have an understanding, uh, and a voice, uh, into how we're going to spend that money on those projects. And every project should have, should meet some need for safety, nuisance, or, uh, making our quality of life better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Ms. Chesley, please.
So I think it's important to speak with the residents and get their opinion before decisions are made, um, especially on those big expenditures that, um, will cost them money. I tend to look at it, um, from more a personal way of running my household and how I spend my personal funds. Um, I sit there and I prioritize things that are important to us. I ask what the need is. Is it a need or a want? I say that a lot. Um, and I think it, it's going to be important of who it benefits or what residents it benefits. Does it benefit the entire city? Or is it a subsection of those within a specific community? Um, so I'm, in, in my opinion, we listen to the residents and, um, we see what value it holds for the city. And if we need to put it up for a bond or a vote, I think that would be important to know, um, exactly what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Well, like with any big, big project, we have to identify the need. Once the need is identified, we have to have an inclusive process where the information is provided to the, to the residents as well as, uh, staff and get everybody's input. Um, I, I agree, uh, you know, all my years in, in, in federal, uh, service, that, uh, but the budgeting process is difficult, but we have to learn, be able to learn to plan out, to go ahead and have enough money to go ahead and, and be able to, uh, to work these big capital projects. But it, on the, on the smaller, on the rack and stack issues, the ones that we can afford to go ahead and, and use pay-as-you-go, uh, systems, that's what we need to do. But if it's a large capital project, we include everybody. Uh, we don't need to, i- if necessary, we bring experts in, see what best practices are, uh, in other, uh, as close as apples-to-apples, same-size type of communities, what they've done in the past. Most projects are not brand-new ideas that have happened. Uh, somebody else has done them before. And we can present that to the voters and to the residents and to the staff and, and the engineers to get folks involved so that we're all working from the same area.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Appreciate that. We have two more questions on the evening. Ms. Emily, we'll start this question with you. Currently, the city council candidates run at-large, meaning that there are no districts within the city and the city council members could all theoretically live in the same neighborhood. Do you agree with the current at-large format, or do you believe the city could, should consider districts?
Right now, I do agree with the at-large districts. And, uh, you know, I know we're, we're a growing community, but I think right now it makes sense that we represent the community as a whole. Uh, we, we just recently put in, not that long ago, the Home Rule Charter, um, which included having the city council members run for at-large positions. And that was approved by over ninety percent of the voters. So I think the vote, the, most of the residents in Fair Oaks also agree that having at-large council members, folks who are going to be responsible, not just to wherever they live, but the, the entire community is really the best way to go, um, for where we are at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
We are a cohesive community. We are, the, every, every portion of Fair Oaks Ranch, uh, is, it may have a little difference. But I would, I would hate to see, yeah, at-large, uh, council go away. Uh, I believe that, uh, even though I live on the north side or, or Chesley lives on the north side, uh, that I can effectively represent people on the south side as well. Um, I, I would hate to see the city, uh, fractionalize, uh, quite frankly. Um, when you have districts, uh, things have a, have a tendency to, I'm looking over, looking at what's best for my backyard type of thing. Uh, I don't think we're at the size of this, of the co- community where we have to go in that direction. I think that we want to keep our sense of community. I think that everybody on the council needs to take everybody's, uh, every, everybody's, uh, opinion into account when we make decisions and, uh, not based upon, uh, location where our, our house is or where we've run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Ms. Chesley.
So, um, I believe that the at-large districting was voted on by the residents. And it's my understanding that those that created, that were on the Home Rule Charter Committee, thought that was the best idea for our community. I'll echo what a lot of others have said in that I believe that every council member that serves on council should be concerned with all areas of, in the city, not just the things that directly affect. Like, you know.
Thank you, Ms. Chesley. Mr. May.
Well, I'm personally, uh, for the at-large, uh, representation versus, uh, district. Uh, mainly because you may end up having a district that you don't have volunteers to serve on the council. And, and after all, we are volunteers. Um, it's not a paid position. Um, and so for the love of the city is why you need to do that. And so whether I live on the, on the parkway by Ralph Fair Road and somebody else live Rain Tree or wherever, uh, we represent everybody. Uh, it's not, yeah, uh, I'm just going to focus on one little area and, and nor should anybody. Uh, hopefully, we'll never get to that point. Uh, and if so, then I hope the rest of the city council members would, would, uh, kind of, uh, talk to that person and correct it. But, uh, I think we should always focus on the residents and it should be at-large.
Thank you for that, Mr. May. Mr. Delaranco.
I served on the Home Rule Charter Commission. I also brought this same issue up at one of the very first meetings when I suggested that two city council members should be appointed from each county. I was shot down by our legal counsel that advised this was not permissible due to state law. Apparently, a majority of the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch agreed with that at-large provisions, since it passed with ninety-two percent of the popular vote. Any changes to the city charter shouldn't be taken lightly. Districts have been found to create segregation. Pitting one section of the city against another often results in gerrymandering of those districts to serve the political interests of a few. At-large representative styles promote a more unifying structure that represent all of the citizens. It's also important to note that different areas of the city have vastly different needs and concerns. So what is at stake is the question as to what ultimately serves, uh, our citizenry best as a whole. And I still agree with the, with the argument that at-large district, districting is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dave. Mr. Taylor.
There we go. Yeah, no, I agree with everybody else. I mean, I, I don't know where the idea came from, you know. If this was a question raised by one of the citizens, I would love to, residents rather, I would love to talk to them about it. It's just, I think we're too small for council districts, which could lead to certain voids in our council due to a lack of residents willing to participate in proposed areas. More importantly, I believe that districting the city would lead to more divisiveness and could potentially create a time lapse in completion of certain projects. So some examples, Curville, a much larger city than Fair Oaks Ranch, they're at-large. And maybe closer, a closer example to, uh, community, possibly a little bit more like Fair Oaks Ranch, Alamo Heights, which also operates under, uh, an at-large form of versus, representation. Um, but, uh, yeah, and I, I don't see districting being a good fit for Fair Oaks Ranch.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. We are now at our final question for the evening. And Mr. Parker, we'll start this question with you. It says, "What will you do as a council member to continue to improve transparency on major issues and projects the council addresses before they are initiated?"
Well, I'm a firm believer in transparency. My whole adult life has been, been based in government service. And, uh, I'm a firm believer that, uh, um, open doors create, help create transparency and give us the ability to communicate. I, I have learned that, uh, certain information's not available, uh, in the way that we are currently running, uh, with our, our council, city council notes. Uh, we need, I, I'll certainly take a look at that. And I believe that, that all, all people should be, all citizens of, of Fair Oaks need to have, be afforded the ability to hear what has gone on and see at a later date if they can't, uh, right now, we're zooming in, if they can't attend a city council meeting. This is something that is really important. The more that people are involved, the more that people are available and to hear what we, what happens during, during the city council meetings, uh, then things will be more transparent. When we ask questions, we can't just kick it to the attorney general's office. We need to have
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chesley.
Okay, um, to me, transparency is being open and honest and straightforward with all aspects of the city. Um, I think the city does a great job in publishing the information that's going to be discussed in the upcoming meetings. Um, I'm able to easily access it and find it. I feel that the city could improve, um, communication with residents and leverage all the tools that they have recently established. Some of the things I think Nextdoor, the Facebook, um, page they have, email, notify me, Code Red. Um, another idea I have is listening to the public and holding, um, meetings and public forums for people to get involved, especially with major capital expenditures. Um, and I think we should do that, obviously, before the decisions are made. In my opinion, if we had engaged the public, um, before the water tower, um, in the decision of the capital expenditure versus just engaging them when we had a location that we were trying to decide on, that would have gone a long way to repair some of those issues that we have. Um, I recently was at a Bernie City Council meeting, and although I forgot the acronym, they have a process they put in place to do that. So I think it's something that we could do that could help with the success of the community.
Thank you for that. Mr. Taylor.
Transparency is crucial to successful governance. I want to take the, I took the time to do my homework and met with city staff and current city officials. I know that Mayor Manizas and the city council made huge changes in transparency when they came into office. They added more times and longer times to citizens to speak at council meetings. And they started using town hall meetings to get citizens' input on major issues. We've also added a Facebook page, a Nextdoor presence, and a video channel to the communications tools. The most recent State of the City address that the mayor and the staff did is a good example of some more of the sophisticated tools that we're using. And obviously, I want to continue to improve on their work by creating a marketing plan to get more residents tuned in to these communications.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. May.
Yeah, so, um, uh, for transparency, um, it's, it's key for the city to do, uh, to open up and to allow the residents to understand what is happening within the city. Um, and, you know, reach out to them via Nextdoor, Facebook, um, but also just the normal minute meetings, uh, from the city council meetings, uh, that outline specifically, uh, what is being discussed, which capital projects, um, what are some of the thoughts out there, enlist them in a pro and con format, uh, so that the city residents can go, okay, I can see that side or I can see that side. Uh, not just, uh, this is how, this is what the consultant said, and this is the way we're going to march. Um, I think that with the stormwater utility fee, if that had gotten communicated better, um, yeah, maybe the city, instead of paying a hundred and seventy-one thousand for a consultant to tell us how to do our business, maybe the residents could come up with ideas, uh, that would be equally as well. Um, and also to allow the, uh,
Thanks a lot, Mr. May.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Emily.
So I believe, um, strongly in transparency. I believe strongly in following the law that surrounds issues with, of, open government laws. And I do believe it's very important for us to communicate well with our residents. Um, we do have a lot of tools that the city uses, uh, to communicate with the residents. We, um, I think J.C. listed a bunch of them. The citizens' time to speak at meetings, notify me, Nextdoor, Facebook, the city website, and emails with, um, the, the mayor minutes, or I, I don't, I don't forget what they call, what it's called. But, um, as well as individual emails from council members. Um, I know I get individual emails from council members. I think that's important. And I know even with all those tools, we still have challenges in getting information to the residents. And so I think it's going to be important to listen to residents. Um, and I echo that, you know, the residents may have some really good ideas. And so I think we need to, um, you know, be open to communicating with the residents and hear them out for other ideas. But I do always believe that, um, we do need to follow the law. Um, and then I will al- always be available to residents and will respond candidly to any questions they may have.
Mr. Delaranco.
Yeah, I think I addressed this earlier about transparency as being one of the biggest issues that I have with this city council and that, uh, we're seeing diminishing, uh, transparency within the city. You know, it's a truism that trust is the fundamental principle upon which all freely-elected governments are founded. But transparency itself promotes accountability as well as efficiency. It's paramount in promoting good governance at all levels. And it's the very necessary first step in fighting corruption. The question then, as I understand it, is how do you increase it before the projects are initiated? Well, I'd first start by executing a policy. Well, I'd first start by executing a policy that engages the community in the discussion through town halls, uh, meetings with various HOAs, opening up the lines of communication with emails, text messages and maybe a monthly newsletter that we currently do along with the notify me option on the city's website. Uh, I'd also deal very quickly with any noted violations of our transparency policy and I'd hold those persons publicly accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaranco. So now we'll conclude with our closing statements. Just so you know that there's no favoritism, the way we're going to do this is by going from the screen left to right. So, Mr. Taylor, two minutes for your closing statement, please.
Yeah, this has been great. I would just like to take a second to thank you, Dante, Renee, Judy for, for, and Forha for hosting this event. Um, I would also like to thank all the residents for tuning in to hear a bit about all the candidates. I have a vested interest in preserving and protecting Fair Oaks Ranch. I want to see too that all residents have a peace of mind that they're going into the future. Fair Oaks Ranch will maintain its unique style and charm. I was blessed to be raised here and I want future generations to have that same opportunity as well. We have challenges ahead. We need to focus on maintaining our city today and into the future with financially smart individuals who can address the issues ahead while keeping our residents as the number one priority. I will maintain the city's semi-rural characteristics, infrastructure and public safety with the residents and their tax dollars always at the forefront. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. May.
I too want to thank you, Forha, for, uh, for hosting this event and for each of the residents that have tuned in tonight. And being able to provide some questions that, uh, that they wanted answers to. So we've, uh, we've done that for you. Uh, I'm all about open communication, um, and I will make sure that, uh, that goes true within city hall. I've laid out some of my thoughts on how we would do that. And I also want to let you know that, um, what I will bring to the city council is leadership and problem solving skills. Uh, I'm for less government. I made no mistake about that tonight. I believe fiduciary responsibility is required within city council, uh, when paying, uh, using taxpayer dollars on projects that the residents don't want. I believe in property taxes, uh, property rights that should be protected, and prioritizing infrastructure, uh, issues, uh, that will benefit our residents. I will also always listen to you. I am, uh, supported by no one. So, uh, the only, the only communication and honest communication is between, between us. Uh, there's no hidden agendas there. Uh, again, thanks for everything and my website is voteformaythenumberfour.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Delaranco.
There's no way to underestimate the simple fact that the city of Fair Oaks Ranch is now at the most critical crossroad in its brief and enviable history. This election on the first of May will not only determine our future destiny, but it also comes to define us as the people we are and how we want to be remembered by the generations to come. I'm the only candidate here tonight that was there from the very beginning. I personally knew our founding fathers and I continue to share in their grand vision for a semi-rural rustic Texas Hill country bedroom type of community that originally attracted us to build our homes and to raise our families here. It wasn't that long ago I was able to stop the city of San Antonio annexation efforts and help to incorporate the cities of Fair Oaks Ranch North and South. I'm proud to have stood shoulder to shoulder with our founding fathers as we consolidated those two cities into what we now know as the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. The challenges before us now are no less daunting and will require a test of will, character and perseverance that I'm willing to offer you one more time, if not to only ensure our success, but also to preserve our heritage. I seek to not only restore the integrity of our founding fathers' vision for the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, but desire to honor our current residents by enforcing our comprehensive plans, strengthen and preserve our city's character. I welcome the changing demographics of our city and I think it's important to protect our existing neighborhoods and property values. By preserving our unique hill country character with a much lower density development along with a higher standard of living we've all loved and come to expect. And my long and time-tested experience with the city of Fair Oaks Ranch has proven my worth in that regard. I can only hope that you'll agree after tonight's forum, I'm not only the best and most uniquely qualified candidate to serve you, but I've earned your trust and will continue to provide you with responsible municipal leadership that is not only responsive to your needs, but also ensures all of our citizens are treated with the dignity and respect that they deserve. Finally tonight, I ask the good Lord to continue to provide his continents and good graces upon each and every one of you as you vote your conscience this May 1st in deciding the future of our most beloved community. I wish you all luck and Godspeed as we venture forward from the fog of history and into the divine light of providence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaranco. Mr. Parker.
Thanks again for the opportunity to visit with you, y'all and to the, Forha, you guys are awesome. Thanks so much for sitting up. Uh, to all the residents who've tuned in to hear what we've had to say tonight. Uh, this is a, an interesting way to do business and, and thank you for, uh, for persevering with us. Fair Oaks, this is our home. It's a unique lifestyle, culture, uh, and, and varied from neighborhood to neighborhood and, and the, the flavor that, that, uh, goes with each of those. Because of the, our makeup, I honestly believe that this requires, uh, unique but, but varied types of, uh, responses to the same problems that we, we all have here, uh, depending upon whether in the suburban environment or out rural where I am. But city government works for everybody and I want to be part of that city government. I'm bringing a great skill set to the city council table that, uh, involves very unique combinations of fact-finding, uh, people skills, preparation, negotiation and presentation of facts. A past military career was heavily steeped in team building, problem solving, leadership and staff work. As a city council, we're working together, uh, to solve problems with the citizens. This is what we used to say, uh, uh, one team, one fight. All of us working together, council, residents and city staff. I'm asking for your confidence in your vote, uh, on May 1st or the, or the, uh, the, uh, general, the general election going on starting next Monday to keep preserving the great lifestyle that we have here and the, the flavor of our hill country land ranch that we live in. Thanks so much for visiting with, uh, with me today and, uh, I want to wish you all a good night. Thank you again, Forha.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mrs. Emily Stroup, please.
Thank you to Forha for hosting this. I also want to say thanks to all the other candidates who've, um, been a part of this. It's been a very, um, unique experience and I also want to thank the attendees for listening. And, um, obviously, uh, Fair Oaks Ranch is a very special place and that's why most of us, if not all of us, came to Fair Oaks Ranch. There's just something special about where we live. You know, I have also a vested interest in Fair Oaks Ranch and the future of Fair Oaks Ranch. I've got two young children and so I want to, you know, help preserve and protect our uniqueness. Uh, you've heard my positions on several of these issues tonight that are important to the residents. Uh, I encourage the residents to reach out to me if there are other issues that we were not able to address and I'd be happy to have a dialogue with you on those issues. I believe that three very important issues and issues that I will certainly focus on are going to be safety, our city services and again, our sense of community. Those are, I think, three of the biggest reasons why people come to Fair Oaks Ranch and I think we need to do our best to maintain and preserve all three of those aspects. I want to maintain Fair Oaks. I want to, um, maintain our special, unique culture. I know we have some challenges ahead and I believe my background in the boards that I've served on as well as, um, my, my volunteer work and my work as an attorney, provide a unique background to assist the city in addressing these future challenges. I want to, I want my kids to know the same Fair Oaks Ranch that we know now. So again, my name is Emily Stroup. I humbly ask for your support. Um, and if you'd like to learn more, you can go to voteemilystroup.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Stroup. And last but not least, Ms. Chesley Monchow.
Thank you, Forha, Dante, Renee, all the other candidates and our residents that participated tonight. I love our city and my expensive, extensive financial management experience, business acumen and years of community service will serve the city as it shapes and frames decisions that affect us all. I want to preserve the uniqueness of Fair Oaks Ranch and the quality of life for generations to come while managing growth responsibly within the city. If elected to council, I promise to listen to the concerns of all of the residents, independently analyze the issues we face, operate in a fiscally conservative manner and be in transparent in all that I do. As I said before, I can't imagine another community to raise my kids in and I know that I can make a difference as we navigate these challenging issues. Please vote Chesley for Fair Oaks Ranch, city council, place six. And if you'd like to find out more about me, my website is chesleyforfairoakstrange.com. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Chesley. Uh, again, we want to thank all the candidates tonight for taking your time out. We know that you took time away from your families, uh, to be able to be here tonight and we greatly appreciate that. Thank you for your honesty, your candor. I know that we kind of put you on a time constraint with these questions. Uh, as we've already said, please citizens, if you have further questions as the candidates have said tonight, please reach out to them one-to-one, uh, even for the candidate that was not here. If you would want to get their perspective on things, reach out to them one-to-one. We truly appreciate everybody tuning in tonight. May God bless. Uh, may you have safety and prosperity amongst you and your families. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you, everyone.